Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Well, good morning, everyone. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our prayer this morning is from Ephesians. It's in Christ that we find out who we are and what we are living for. Long before we first heard of Christ and got our hopes up, He had His eyes on us, had designs on us for glorious living, part of the overall purpose He is working out in everything and everyone. And our dog today, I believe Commissioner Kalo has our dog today.
Yeah, look at this. This week's featured pet is a lab-mixed female, about five years old, absolutely adorable and friendly. Give me your paw. Come here, sit down, sit down a minute. Sit down. Now, give me your paw. There you go. She was found in Alariah. She's got an absolutely great personality. She's gonna make a great dog for somebody's family. She's actually available today, so stop by. How many dogs do we have now? Nineteen? And we have nineteen dogs total, so if she isn't quite your fit, I'm sure we have something for you and your family.
Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments.
So move.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Corporations?
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Transfers?
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Travel?
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Bill's?
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Travel?
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Bills?
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners.
County Administrator Cordez.
Thank you, Commissioner. The, uh, we do have a few personnel issues, specifically potential hires at Job and Family Services. I want to discuss a potential, possibility for a potential hire at 911. Also, ongoing union negotiation with United State Workers of America. I had a brief talk with them yesterday, and I met with Children's Services to begin the conversation with their contract United Auto Workers of America. So, I want to brief you on those, and the potential sale and purchase of real estate. All of those topics are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussion, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting, we go into executive session and talk about those issues. Thank you.
I approve away the reading in the minutes of February 10, 2016.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Lorraine Municipal Court appointed Tom Borkowitz to bailiff effective February 2016 with a bi-weekly rate of $675.64, which reflects the county's two-fifth share.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Advertise Proposals for County Elevator Maintenance and Repair Service, notice in Journal on February 19 and 26, mandatory pre-bid at 2:00 p.m. on March 3, and open at 2:00 p.m. on March 10.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Conform the boundaries of Oberlin Township, New Rush Township, City of Oberlin, consisting of 0.799 acres, which was the Horning filing filed by Law Director John Clark.
Yeah, so move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Receive and journalize the Keene-Cobell Ditch Petition from La Grange Township through the Stormwater District to clean and clear. Viewing will be held March 22 at 9:30, hearing will be held April 19 at 9:30. Notice to residents will be March 2, and publication will be March 8 and 16.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Receive and journalize vacation petition request from Republic Service, requests to vacate Butternut Ridge Road, Carlisle, New Rush Township. Viewing will be held on April 5 at 9:00 a.m., hearing will be held May 3 at 9:30. Notice to be sent to owner on March 15, and publication in paper on March 22 and 29.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Now, this is just for receiving the petitions.
Correct.
So, for those who are here, to make them very much aware that we're not voting on this matter, we're just simply receiving the petition.
And doing the paperwork, yes.
Which is our responsibility by law. We have to accept it.
Yes.
And we did indicate when the hearings will be held. I think it's also important to point out that what, by law, we're only required to notify the actual adjacent property owners.
Correct.
Okay. Could you give us clarification on that?
I'll be sending a letter to the townships stating that could they please inform the residents that this is going on.
Yeah, so we need the residents to know that by law we're required to notify those properties that are adjacent to the vacation, vacated area in question, which would mean that there aren't property owners adjacent to that. However, there are property owners in the area which by law we're not required to notify. I don't want the public to think that we're holding meetings or hearings without, you know, you having a chance to provide, you know, input and feedback on, on the direction you want this to go, but by law, if you, if you don't receive anything in the mail, it's because we're following the laws to who we're required to notify. But we are notifying the township trustees so that they can also notify the residents.
We are, I have received a lot of emails and phone calls, so if you do want to send something in, if you can't make the hearing, you're welcome to send an email to any of us, and we will keep that on file for the hearing.
Now, to, just to expand on what Commissioner Lundey said, even though you don't receive notice, you're still allowed to come and testify and talk at the public hearing. So the notice is a minimum requirement, but anybody, they can live in an adjacent county who they want to come and talk on the issue are allowed to. So I, I think it's gonna be a rather robust process. And I know the township's already had a couple informal meetings with, with folks out there, so, um, you know, I think that we need to make sure that the word gets out all along that area.
And just for those who are here, I mean, we do have a, a public comment available at the end of this meeting. We're just going through the board business, so if you had come here today wanting to make a public comment, we'll be handling that here towards, towards the end of the meeting.
But, if you ask, that, if, if somebody does speak about it today, it won't be part of the...
Right.
The testimony.
Won't be part of the testimony, right.
So, okay.
Anything further? Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Under Job and Family Authorized Purchase Service Agreement with Medina County Sheltered Industries, DBA Windfall Industries, Wadsworth, to provide a work experience program for supplemental nutrition assistance program recipients in fiscal year 16 with an amount of $224,807.23 effective February 9 to September 30, 2016.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Under the Engineer-War Contract of Gregory Trucking, Alariah, an amount of $113,250 for limestone aggregate for Highway Department. Three bids were received on February 10. This being the most responsive compliance specification, will be paid for an MVGT Supplies Material Account.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Cordez.
I have no additional comments this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis.
Commissioners, I do have several items of pending and imminent litigation to discuss in executive session, and I would also like to add, again, encourage each of the townships, the trustees there to announce at their meetings, and if you have any newsletters or anything, get the word out. And for those of you folks who are here, I know I've been out to your meetings, you've, you've wanted to make sure that you'll have an opportunity to be heard, and, and this will be your opportunity, so, like I said, it's very important you get the word out. We don't want anybody to not hear about this and not get their opportunity to come in and, and be able to voice their opinion and thoughts regarding this.
Commissioners' Report.
Um, if anybody travels the Ford Road Bridge in Alariah, you might see what I've seen a lot of times. There's garbage along the bridge, and I have a pet peeve of littering anyways, but I had contacted our environmental crimes unit. They go and, to ask them to investigate, to see if maybe they can find something in the garbage that might reflect where that garbage is coming from. I also talked to the mayor of Alariah about it, but come to find out, it's somebody who is actually picking up litter along in the metro parks and leaving it there for the sanitation department to pick up. So if you drive along there and you see that garbage, know it's somebody picking up litter, and it's not somebody actually littering, so, wanted to let people know, because, yeah, really unsightly, but they're actually doing a good thing. That's end of my report.
Yeah, busy week this past week. On Friday, the Executive Committee of NOAAAC met to go over our final agenda for next month's governance meeting. Congratulations Lorraine Police and Fire for the fire and vice ball. Very nice turnout. Actually had the Blue Lives Matter people here from New York City, again, speaking about all the issues going on, but it was a very nice, as always, good job for them. Monday morning, I attended the Huron and Lorraine County Farm Bureau breakfast in Wellington, talking about the issues within our counties, state reps and such. So it was a nice turnout, nice to see our other elected officials there, talking about issues that affect the Farm Bureau. Monday evening, the Palace Civic Center in downtown Lorraine did a Black History Month event. Like to thank, you know, the staff at the Palace are doing a really good job on bringing that back, along with Mayor Rittenhour, Gene Rice, and of course Congressman Marcy Capter, who spoke. Tuesday, had a conference call. I serve on a committee with the County Commissioners Association, Joint Committee on Elections with Board of Elections officials, discussing moving forward on a white paper for our state legislature on dealing with the upcoming extreme cost. It could be somewhere near a matter of $150 million or so for the purchase of new machines. All of our machines are a decade old. The feds came in and helped after all the issues with hanging chads, but now we're looking at a significant infrastructure cost to continue doing elections, so we had a lot of dialogue and suggestions. So we're working on it over the next couple months to take it to the State House.
We need to have it too.
Pardon me?
We need to have it too.
We need to have it too, exactly, but the feds have said they're not doing anything, so we're hoping the state will jump in and help. With similar to the poll books at the 85-15 split, there's different scenarios, a three-year phase-in and stuff. Speaking with Paul Adams from our Board of Elections, and probably about half of the counties in the state of Ohio, they have the D-Bolt system. It's been sold out a couple of times. The concern about doing it over a three-year phase-in of equipment is we'd end up with multiple trainings. We'd have to train on the old equipment and the new equipment, because the platform is probably won't transfer over to whoever it ends up with now. We're asking Department of Administrative Services to put together specs on it. Either one for the entire state, one machine for the entire state, and/or there's always a concern with local rule on who they want to go with, so we're trying to work that out and give the best package we can to the state legislature, hopefully for funding, because as Paul Adams said, by 2017, we're really gonna need new equipment. Also, congratulations Lorraine County Bar Association, all the candidates. I attended their Candidates Debate Night last night. It was quite entertaining. It's always good to see lawyers going at it, so.
And not billing us, right?
And not billing us, exactly. That actually came up. I wasn't allowed any retort, but that's okay. End of my report.
Well, had the opportunity to attend the Farm Bureau breakfast with a farmer, which took place at Lorraine County Community College on Saturday. Very informative, talking about alpacas and dairy farms and greenhouses and all kinds of different approaches being used, and while the food was just excellent, it was all locally made. The Office on Aging hosted an Aging Advocates Group or Seminar the other day. They asked me to come over and talk a little bit about advocates reaching out to elected officials, how to work with their elected officials. I told them that if they were upset about anything, send those letters to Commissioner Kalo, otherwise we would take the other letters, but it was, yeah, it was, it was very, very helpful and, you know, very informative. Also, looking forward to the Township Association meeting coming up in Eaton on Thursday night. Grace Galucci from the WACA will be there, and I think it's a great opportunity for everybody to learn about the tremendous work, the tremendous resource that we have in the Northeast Ohio Area Wide Coordinating Agency. And that concludes my report.
Matt, I, I thought the servers at the Farm Bureau were exceptional.
Yes, the servers, yeah, that's right. Do you have a twin brother over there? I saw somebody look just like you as one of the servers, and...
And Mr. Will and Mr. Romancic.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, that's right. Don was there as well, too, so, but it was a really, really nice function, very nice function. Let's see, we have the Clerk's Report.
Just say 11:03, we're gonna have our Stormwater District meeting. Board Correspondents?
Okay. Uh, let's see. Move to approve the Board Correspondents. Waive the reading.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Public Comment.
This will be the opportunity for public comment if anyone wants to make any comments at this time. As we said, if it's in reference to Butternut Ridge Road, it wouldn't be part of the official record on that issue, and that'll be coming up at the later date that we've set. But if anybody wanted to make any public comment at this time, you're certainly more than welcome to do that. Did you wish to do so, sir? Okay, if you could just make your way to the podium, if you could give us your name and address, and there will be, just so you know, an opportunity for you to give your official statement at the, the actual official hearing.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Richard Pollan. My family and I have a business in Carlisle Township. We started in 1932. We employ about forty people. We built the place where we're at now in 1976, and it started out quite well. We were right on the corners of Route 10 and Route 20, which was a very good location. It was a high traffic area. After 480 went in, it really isolated our business, and it was devastating to us. We employ about forty people, and it was quite a thing for us to overcome because of the isolation. Now you're talking about closing Butternut Ridge Road, which is a main access for our customers from the west. Besides that, we transport a lot of overwith machinery. Most of it comes down Butternut Ridge Road now, rather than coming through the city of Oberlin. There again, that's another reason that we feel that the road should not be closed. I think it would isolate our business, as it did in '76. If you drive along old Route 20, you'll see that there were a lot of businesses there at one time, and they're all gone. So I'm putting a request in that the road stays open. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollan.
Any others wish to participate in public comment? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Steve Jackson. I live on Oberlin Road in New Rush Township. I actually work for Dick. I would like to invite each of you to come to the store, and I'd like to take you for a ride in a combine. And let's go down the road so you can see what we go through and our customers go through in order to get back and forth. The other thing I'd like you to maybe look into, look at the Erie County landfill. Hoover Road runs right next to it, much like Butternut does here. They had the exact same problem, needing to move dirt, and they were able to do it without closing a road.
How did they do it? Did they signalization, or how did they?
Got in the truck, drove back and forth.
Okay.
It's really easy.
Yeah.
No road closed, no lights, no flagman, no stop sign. And it's actually a more difficult road to cross because it is limited visibility because of the terrain. It's hilly, and it has a lot of curves in it. So I gotta think there's a better way to get this job done.
Thank you for your time.
That's all I got for you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I moved to recess into executive session to discuss personnel issues that were outlined by the County Administrator and legal issues that were outlined by the Assistant Prosecutor.
Second.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski. Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
Then we have the task of hauling everything out of the trailer and taking it into the gymnasium, or lunchroom, or whatever large multipurpose room they have for us. We're generally there for the whole day. If we're going to be back at the school the next day, we can leave our equipment still set up. If we're gonna be at a different school the next day, then we have, we have the job of removing it from the multipurpose room and taking it back to the trailer, loading up the trailer, and locking it up and calling it quits for the day. It started in January 2007 with CERTS, which is Safe Routes to School, and Ken had an idea to develop the Safety Star Program. It has escalated to the point where, as of this year's date, we have seen 38,000 students in Lorraine County.
County Engineers' Office is quite proud to announce that the Safe Routes to School Program has been initiated throughout Lorraine County. We're very excited about this. To help these children from grades K to four, teaching them to walk the streets safely is, is very important to us. We've seen statistics that quite frankly shock us. Many times, we read and see stories of pedestrians being hit by automobiles in Lorraine County, and, and it just tears my heart to see these children from K to four. Part of that, this program is to stop that, to help diminish those type of situations, and educate these children on walking and crossing the street safely, and we're quite happy to announce.
As we bring safety to the school, we're self-contained. We have all the, the mock simulations of scenarios such as busy intersections. We have all the roads, movie screens, our audio/video system, streets, sidewalks, grass, working traffic signals, working railroad signals, and we bring that all to the school so the student does not have to leave. To make sure that all the light bulbs are working. And that all the audio/video equipment is up and running, we then put on the program. We put together a dynamite program with a lot of positivity. We're very animated. The students enjoy it while they're learning an important rule about safety. When we ask questions, we ask for group participation. It's never just one student answering the question, it's everybody answering the question together.
Are you ready? Yeah!
Teachers included. We make learning fun for everybody. We show two, two short films. One is Willie the Whistle, and Willie the Whistle teaches kids in a, in a simple format the correct way to walk with parents, aunt or uncles, or any other family members that are responsible, adults, to cross streets where there are no stop signs, or where it's just stop signs and no traffic lights, and to cross streets where there are parked cars, what to look for, when to cross, when there are cars parked along the sides of the street. And again, that's, it's all basically looking left, right, and left. When the short film is over, we generally teach from what the kids just watched, and that's, those are the scenarios then we go over with our, our mock setup. We go over basically what the video has just gone over, and then we let the kids apply what they just learned to doing it in real life, to our, our mock simulation that we have in the room that we are performing in. Everybody leaves at the end of our program with a great feeling, knowing that all they have to do is look left, right, and left again, and they're gonna be smiling for a good long time. I would highly recommend this program to all administrative principals in, in every school system. And it's, it's a very good program. I believe in it 100%. I've had students see me at the mall, or see me at a carnival, or a festival, and come up and say, "I remember you. You're the safety guy. You're Mr. Neal." And the first question I ask them, "What are the three ways you look before you cross the street?" This could be the year after we saw them, and they always say, "Left, right, and left again," and they say it with a smile. So I know our program works.
Because you did a good job today, at the end of the day, you're gonna get to go home with the yellow Safety Star bag, okay?
Ah, the fun part. The students get to take home their surprise at the end of the day, which is the yellow Safety Star bag, and inside that bag are some neat things about pedestrian safety. We have the pedestrian safety flashcards. They also will get the Safety Star Certificate of Participation, which has their school name on it, and the date, and we like to let the kids know that that's something that they can take home and hang on their refrigerator, they can hang on their bedroom door, or they can have their parents put it in a scrapbook for them. Their parents will receive some information, such as the top ten safety tips for adults, because even as adults, we need to refresh our memories on safety. They, as students, will receive the top ten Safety Star tips for students. They will also receive a Safety Star maze for those that are a little bit more adventurous and like a challenge. We also offer a safety coloring sheet, and there are some other things in the bag, but the things the kids like the most is the Safety Star pencil, and that's a pencil that changes colors when you touch it. And with that pencil comes the Safety Star Eraser, which is a, a yellow eraser shaped like a star, and it says "Safety Star" on it.
Yeah!
We need forty-foot by forty-foot area, electrical accessibility, and a, a way to turn off and on the main lights of the room for our movies that we show. The smallest class we've done is fifteen students, the largest class is sixty. So usually, the, the classes range from twenty-three to twenty-five students per class. There, there are occasions where the school has to schedule two classes at a time. We're very flexible. We do have the ability to fit into smaller rooms, so we, we pretty much will accommodate to what they can, they can offer. I would highly recommend this program to all principals in, in every school system. At the end of the day, I feel very, very good.[1719.65] At the end of the day, I feel very, very good. I'm excited that I know that kids are going to practice what they've learned, and I can go home and sleep good at night, knowing that those children are going to get to school safely, they're going to get home safely, they're going to be smiling, and their parents are going to be smiling, because everybody is safe.
Every election in Ohio begins in a place like this one, a county board of elections. In each of Ohio's 88 counties, a county board of elections is responsible for planning and conducting all federal, state, and local elections. While everyone in Ohio is aware that elections take place, not everyone has the opportunity to see what goes on behind the scenes. Our goal in the next several minutes is to provide you with an inside glimpse of what happens at a board of elections, including its duties and its significance on its community, county, the state, and the nation.
All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting in the Hamilton County Board of Elections to order. Proper notice has been given as required by the Ohio Sunshine Bureau.
We're made up of, half of us are appointed by the Democratic Party, and half of us are appointed by the Republican Party. And then we operate with a four-person board. Again, two members are elected from the Democratic Party, two from the Republican Party.
We have a full-time staff of about 36, both made up of Democrats and Republicans. We also hire during election cycles many temporary employees who are also members of each major political party.
We have 44 full-time permanent staff here at the Franklin County Board of Elections. But at election time, both in a gubernatorial year or in a presidential year, that staff will expand up to, in the presidential year, for example, we had probably about 250 people working here on a seasonal basis at the Board of Elections, both here at our office, at our warehouse facility, and at our early vote center that's attached to the Board of Elections here on Moore's Row.
We only have three full-time employees and one part-time employee. So trying to balance between registrations, between absentees, processing absentees, doing all the machine setup, the poll worker, or now the precinct election official, training, recruitment, it's, everybody has to wear many hats, that we, basically, I look at as the jack-of-all-trades, master of all.
Hello, how can I help you?
Yeah, can you give me the winning lottery number?
We get that question a lot. What do you do the rest of the year? Well, as you know, in Ohio, we can have up to four scheduled elections. One year, we actually had six.
We also have things that we put on the back burner, like updating our mapping system, how do we improve our website, you know, how do we get better information out to voters? So there's never really a downtime for us. The poll worker recruitment is a process. It begins Labor Day, and then it continues all the way through election. Greene County needs to recruit 584 poll workers. It's done with a bipartisan team, so we have both the Democrat and Republicans represented to recruit each of their party representatives. And we also, in addition to the poll workers, have to recruit 40 rovers, which are the individuals who set up the equipment, kind of provide the running support for Election Day. So I have a few positions left in Xenia. Now, I do have one that is a very important position that I do need to get filled.
What's your current address? And I'll tell you, I'll give you a couple options of what you need to do.
There is a three-hour training class that's required, and we have several dates and times available for that.
Hi, everybody. My name is Jane, and I'm with the Franklin County Board of Elections. And as you know, you're here to be trained as precinct election officials. How many of you have worked before? Hallelujah. That's wonderful. I'm so happy.
We require, here in Franklin County, our poll workers to go through training every election. And because the landscape of Ohio elections, as we all know, changes so rapidly every year, and we just feel that that investment is very valuable to us.
We could not do this without you. The most sacred right that we have as Americans is the right to vote. You make it possible for the voters, the 850,000 voters in Franklin County, to vote.
We actually put together a timeline. We start 100 days out, and every task we have is included in that timeline, so that we basically work the plan, everything from starting to do the Yuakava notices. We do a complete inventory of all of our supplies 100 days out, and now 28 days before the election, when in-office and mail-out absentee begins.
Blend an A2. If they want a paper ballot, or if they're provisional, they're going to have ballots already printed.
When a voter requests an absentee ballot, we have a program that will actually bring up their ballot image. We do a PDF of that ballot image, that every night, we send that file, that PDF file, over to our county print shop, which here in Franklin County is located right at our facility. They print up the ballots and bring them to our absentee staff the next morning. They then use what is called a Relia Vote machine, which inserts all the items that need to go into the mailing, the response, the ID envelope, any instructions that go in there, and also the ballot. Gets all stuffed automatically. The machine puts the postage on it at a pre-sorted rate. We've really taken what used to be a very people-centered, labor-intensive process and automated as much as we possibly could.
We get an absentee application in, so we have that application reviewed by both an R and a D. That's the dual-party check, so they both initial off on the application. Then we have a part-time person that basically goes through as a third set of eyes to review it, to make sure that the right ballot was pulled, that the address that we're sending it to is correct on the mailing label, and then actually folds and stuffs the envelope, and then processes it for mailing.
They're all zeros, which means we have cleared a memory card, and no one has cast a ballot on this when we send it out.
Well, the L and A aspect, that's very labor-intensive as well, because we actually go through and test every ballot in every single machine to make sure all the media is correct, to make sure the equipment is running adequately and properly.
Marsh. Tinkle lacquer. We're back on the record. Board has heard the results of the test deck. What is the pleasure of the board?
Want to accept the results of the test deck?
Have a motion and second to accept the results of the test deck. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
You're listening to WBOE Radio on this Tuesday morning. Election Day in the Buckeye State, and I hope each and every one of you is ready to go to the polls today to exercise your most precious right as an American, the right to vote.
I enjoy it. I feel like it's important that we, sometimes we're short-staffed in Madison County. I feel like someone has to do it. I enjoy it. I don't know, a little bit of extra money's nice, too.
Just enough. We got the bags coming in now. We got our first truck. So the first thing we're going to do, when they roll the parts in here, is we're going to open up the bag, rip the seal off, put it on the table in front of you, we're going to have a check-in sheet. Unzip the bag, the check-in sheet is in one of those pockets in the middle, pull it out, check to make sure that the E-Scan memory card, it didn't matter back.
No, uh-uh. Take that to the warehouse.
All those trucks in here, you can handle just one truck at a time, one bag at a time.
There's lots going on still after Election Day. There's a lot of different projects that's involved in preparing for the official count. One is, we have thousands of pieces of voting equipment that are out there at close to 400 different polling locations in Hamilton County. So we have to retrieve all of that voting equipment, bring it back to our warehouse, where we have bipartisan teams that inspect all of the equipments. There's the electronic data that needs to be backed up and saved off of all of that equipment. We also have ballot accounting to conduct. We have bipartisan teams that go through the reconciliation sheets and make sure that every ballot that should have been counted was counted in the unofficial count. We also have the provisional verification process, which is a very tedious process and takes a large number of staff to complete that process.
There is no way to do a Republican election, and there's no way to do a Democrat election. There is a way to do a good election.
It's really something that's incredible to witness, because you have, you know, people who obviously have strong affiliations with one party or another, but when they come here to the Board of Elections, they all have a common goal of conducting a fair and efficient election.
Chelsea was very well-liked by her friends and by her teachers.
Ronnie was going down to Tennessee State to be the next player to come out of Tennessee State.
Joey was extremely popular, just surrounded by friends.
Mark was an athletic, fit-looking kid.
Aaron enjoyed talking and debating with any and all people.
The prescription pain pill problem is a huge epidemic.
This is an epidemic.
This is an epidemic that has infiltrated our young people.
We never had a conversation with Joey about prescription drugs, because we truly had no idea that there was any kind of recreational use going on.
The first time I started doing painkillers was when I was 17.
I would steal pills from my friend's mom. Her stepmom had script for Vicodin. That was like heaven. I went in her room and stole Vicodin every day.
He would ask to use the bathroom in other people's homes, and he'd go in there and go in their medicine cabinets and steal prescription drugs.
These medications are available everywhere in every socioeconomic environment.
Ronnie was the starting hat back, one of our best players. He got several scholarship offers.
Ronnie was very popular in the neighborhood.
Ronnie was a neat freak, clean freak, always had his hair braided. When he got into the pill use, his mood changed, he changed, like, was that Dr. Jekyll, Mr. Hyde?
Ronnie's appearance really deteriorated, and it was really unlike him.
I said, "Are you doing drugs?" And my son looked at me with these eyes of, "How could you even think of that, Mom?"
I was walking up to football practice. My coach was walking towards me. He just had this crazy look on his face. He goes, "You think they might have found your brother?" And I was like, to me, I was like goof, and I was like, "I didn't know he went missing." So I was like trying to make her like goof and all, and he was like, "No, Justin, seriously, they, he might have found his body." And I was like, "Wait a minute." I was, "Whoa, what?" He was like, "Yeah, they found, they discovered a body in an apartment in Telford."
I never thought my son would take prescription drugs without a prescription.
Parents often trip themselves up by asking a simple question, "Are you using drugs?" No. One has to be able to say, "I'm seeing some signs here that concern me."
He was a little bit more argumentative. We thought that was maybe hormones.
The person has what we call pinpoint pupils. Literally, the pupils look like a pinpoint.
She slept odd hours.
We didn't know why he was sleeping so late.
If I wasn't able to get high, then I didn't want to get out of bed, because, you know, the physical withdrawals.
We were missing tinfoil from the kitchen, missing spoons.
We'd find the pens that were cut in half.
Straws. There were a lot of charges coming on the credit cards.
We thought that there was somebody stealing money out of her account.
That's probably a pretty good clue, there's something going on. Joey was pretty upset with his roommates. They were spending all their money on medication. Had I known that the medications that they were taking were so dangerous, I would have told them, "You're not even going back to that place."
If you feel something's going on, you got to investigate. I thought it was just a phase. We, partly when we were in high school, and it's just sort of a phase you go through as, you know, experience life, and you grow out of it. And I thought he was on that track.
Joey had been found, and he was unconscious. He had all these medications that he had just received from this doctor. More than likely, he questioned, snorted it. We're just being completely hit blindly by, you know, a situation we had absolutely no understanding of, and no notice of. And in the meantime, my husband's in the house, I'm out front in the front of the house, just, you know, wondering what we're dealing with here. And so finally, Joe just came out and said, "He's gone."
I was downstairs getting ready for work, and Cookie told me she couldn't get Mark up. Mark was powerful and had the nickname, in some circles, of Tank. I reminded her that what she had to do was get a cup of water and splash him with it, and stay out of his way. And she told me it was different. We found a clear plastic bag of loose pills. I'm not sure if he even thought he was doing drugs, and I know that sounds crazy, but it's not like it was heroin or cocaine. We followed the ambulance to the hospital. A few minutes later, someone came in and told us that Mark was dead. We never thought that was a possibility. I had no idea that kids were abusing medicine.
I came home one night, saw the basement light on, and went up to the window, and my son was crushing and snorting pills.
We would find pills in the shoes, in the jackets that are hanging in the closet, in the pockets.
I found some pills hidden under his cushion.
They were in his socks. I never checked my kid's socks.
He took the light switch plate off and put them in there.
Look everywhere. Is it an evasion? No. You're doing the right thing as a parent.
I would question Chelsea, and she would always assure me that everything is fine and nothing's wrong.
Kids don't want to get in trouble, so they're going to tell you exactly what you want to hear.
There was always something down, deep inside, that said to me, "Something's wrong. You doubt yourself, because you wonder if you're making a bigger deal out of something."
You know, maybe deep inside.
you need to include prescription drugs and guide them so they're able to get through their high school years and into college and through their college years drug-free. Have this conversation before it's too late to have this conversation.